Hi, welcome to the Orlando Sentinels Editorial Board interview, featuring Orlando City Council seat four, which takes in a large part of the downtown area, including East of I-4 Colonial Town, Thornton Park, Idola Heights, the Milk District, and oddly enough, the Mullet Millenia. The incumbent is Patty Sheehan, who was first elected in 2000. Her challengers are conservative talk show host Randy Ross and Katie Koch, who is an executive with Ifco Systems here in Orlando. Thank you so much all for being here with us today. And we're going to start with questions. And let's just go right to the recent news. What is your take on the changes that the mayor outlined earlier this week to the downtown redevelopment plan, since District Four is right in the heart of downtown? And let's start with Ms. Koch.
Thank you, Chris, and again, thank you for having me on here. It was an honor and a privilege to be part of the state of downtown yesterday. So I was able to hear Mayor Dyer's outline of the vision for the city, which the vision is great. I think it's great that we're bringing, you know, more retail, more development into downtown. My concern in being in that meeting and hearing these things is that we're still not addressing some of the core issues that are going on in District Four. So we want to bring in businesses, we want to bring in retail, we want to bring in nightlife and things like that. But there's no talk about prioritizing the fact that crime is very high in District Four, that there's an issue with safety. So I think the vision is great. I think there's a lot of wonderful people that work in the city that are developing this. But I have a lot of concerns that we're not addressing some of the core issues that are going on in District Four, specifically downtown around safety.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Mr. Ross to respond next, please.
Well, thanks, guys, I appreciate the opportunity and ladies. I had a different take on yesterday. First of all, I was impressed that the mayor started out with public safety. This is the number one point when discussing everyone's neighborhood. I've lived in downtown since 2003, and I've lived in Orlando since 1993. I see a very different Orlando than when I first came to realize. I see a city that red brick street maintenance is not there. I can walk by the same spot every day with my dog now for two or three years since COVID and see that there's trees popping red brick streets up. I feel like I support the bar and restaurant owners on Wall Street and in downtown. I'm totally against the referendum that is keeping them from being able to be open. And I didn't appreciate that the mayor decided to suggest that the bar owners have some responsibility to outside of their own safety within their facilities hire off-duty policemen in order to subsidize the safety and security of those that come downtown. So while I thought it was nice, I thought it was a nice hurrah. And I do, I don't have any ill will towards the mayor or the council for that matter. I do believe it's time for some drastic change in order to address the issues that are there.
Thank you, and Chris Sheehan.
Yes, I too was at the state of downtown yesterday, and I share Mayor Dyer's vision that we do need to keep downtown safer. We do have 25 officers assigned to downtown detail already, and we were already having, we were having a problem with safety in our downtown shootings and things like that. I think the bar owners should pay their fair share of the cost of providing the extra security. We have gone from having about eight bars in downtown in the 1980s. Now, you know, years later, we have almost 100. So it's, there's a lot of bars. And unfortunately, the nighttime activity has created a situation where it's unsafe between midnight and 2:00 a.m. What's open? The bars. So I do think it's a responsibility of bar owners to help us take care of the situation, since we have required them to put magnetometers in to actually be responsible and make sure that they're maintaining their occupancy, which has caused problems. And also to contribute to off-duty. The crime has gone down significantly. I think we have a lot of challenges in downtown. I have Roseland east of downtown, so I don't have a lot of the bars that are actually in my district. I have more of the Thornton Park area. But I think we all need to be wary of the security and safety in downtown. And I also like the fact that the mayor was talking about adapting to changing office space, and so many workers are working virtually. We're going to have to look to retail and other opportunities in order to diversify our downtown.
One of the follow-ups specifically in District Four is that as entertainment has grown downtown, housing costs have skyrocketed. And District Four is hit particularly hard with IEDS. What, if anything, should the city be doing in addition to its current efforts to expand affordable housing? And let's start with Mr. Ross.
You know, this has been an issue almost, it's much longer than what it's been in the news in downtown. When I first came downtown in 2002, that same house that I bought for $268,000 is right now on the market for $749,000. I couldn't afford that, by the way. And I look at that situation and I realize that unless we put in the things that people don't want to talk about, more apartment communities that have actually appealed. And I saw the mayor's speech yesterday. He spoke to the affordable housing that's going in. But in District Four, we don't have the same luxury that I'm seeing in Lake Ivanhoe area or that we're seeing in Commissioner Hill's district over in District Five. Because in order to do that, we'd have to tear down some of our beautiful homes, our historic homes in our area. So we, in District Four specifically, don't have the same opportunities that some of the other areas do have. And that is, that in and of itself is an inherent problem. I don't think we're ever going to see all the homes torn down around Lake Davis, or Lake Cherokee, and high-rises put in their place. So what we have to be able to recognize is that if we're going to be pushing people a little out of District Four, which is just the reality, we do not have the land space in the district to be able to build affordable housing. It's going to have to go into spaces and places like the Lake Nona area and like what they're doing over in Lake Ivanhoe and other sectors, especially over in District Five. I mean, I think they've done some amazing things over there to bring more affordable housing forward. And we have to look at those examples and start encouraging the folks to move into those areas as well. So again, when you look at District Four specifically, we are a residential community. And as a result, the residential property prices in this district are quite high. Thank you.
I've thought from the days at City Hall about the raiding of Sadowski Fund for years. And I'm so frustrated that now $4 billion later, that money has been reallocated to state government instead of building affordable housing. And that money would have gone to the major cities, Orlando, Jacksonville, Miami, and Tampa. And it's just ridiculous that the state has raided the Sadowski Fund. I wish the Realtors would be more strong in their fight to get that money back, because it's their dock stamps, and we should be using that to build affordable housing. But we do have the ability to build affordable housing. The city of Orlando has taken $53 million from the American Rescue Plan. We were able to kind of move some funding around, and we're going to be doing some affordable housing projects. We do have, we do have available housing opportunities along division. When we did the division plan, there is going to be some housing coming into that area, which is now industrial, because that area has kind of changed from more industrial. It's going to be, there's opportunities to change to more residential. And we also, we have a, we have a project that's coming over there. So I think there are opportunities for affordable housing, and we are going to be building affordable housing. And we need to do more in Orlando. But this is a housing crisis that unfortunately has been created by not allowing, not allowing affordable housing, by stopping the rent control ordinance that should have happened in Orange County. And we're trying to do the right thing in progressive cities. It's a crisis, and we need to solve it, because if we don't, we're going to have more homelessness.
And Ms. Koch, you could address that a little bit.
Sure, thank you. You know, Orlando, specifically District Four, already has a pretty thin supply of affordable housing as it is. I don't think this is new information that affordable housing needed to be built, you know, years ago, because, you know, the contracts for this rental assistance that these folks have and that these folks need is about to expire. So the fact that we're not proactively addressing this well before, you can't be in reactive mode, you have to be in proactive mode, right? So we know it's coming. I specifically, I mean, downtown, in, you know, my kids go to Blenker and Boone. There are families on a regular basis losing their home. You know, the median income in Orlando is $39,000. And we know what the rent looks like, we know what the housing market looks like. And these folks are working full-time, and they can't afford to rent an apartment. And it's very sad. So it's very disappointing that, you know, proactively, we haven't been ahead of this. But, you know, going forward, you know, I think there needs to be better communication. There needs to be conversations with communities that have gotten out ahead of this. I think it's important to not work in a silo and work with the organizations and the people in this community that can help solve this problem. Thank you.
Are you comfortable with the relationship between OUC and the utility and the city as it stands? And let's start with the Commissioner.
Sure, yeah, I think our relationship with OUC is great. It's a city-owned utility, but they have their own board. So we don't have direct control over it. The mayor serves on the OUC board. But, you know, but a municipal utility, it's really helped to add millions of dollars. OUC does do a direct transfer to the city of Orlando. It helps keep our taxes down for our citizens. So I think it's a good relationship. The only concern I've really had with OUC, and they do a great job, by the way, with emergency response, with restoring power, doing a great job with communication. So good relationship there. I have had a problem with them, however, with some of our sustainability solar initiatives. OUC was actually trying to work with some of the, some of the power companies to do away with net metering. I think that if people put solar energy, put solar panels on their house, they should be completely compensated for that investment. You know, fair, just to let it out there, I do have solar panels. But I think that if people are going to make that investment, they're helping out the utility, they're actually creating their own power. They should be fairly compensated for that. And utilities all over across America are trying to stop that, and I think that's wrong. I think it's only fair if people make the investment, they should be able to get their return on investment for solar power and solar energy.
Ms. Ross?
Thank you. Yesterday, and I know Katie doesn't live very far from me, we had a power outage in downtown Orlando before the storm came through. And I was on one of the community pages, and the lady had suggested it was a substation, and it wouldn't be back up until late, and it was back up in 15 minutes. My only concern with our relationship with any utility, specifically with OUC, is I have watched our utility bill. As everyone knows, I care for my mom. So it's like, I work from home, I'm here, I monitor all of that. And I cannot believe the increases in pricing that we have seen with that utility, even within the last year. You know, it's a unique situation. And that, as a result of that, watching that, I see it with just two people. I cannot imagine a family of four, a family of five, people with multiple generational families living in their situation, how they're able to afford not just that increase, of course, what we're seeing at the grocery store and such. So I'd like to see a little bit more effort being placed on being reminded, our role on the city council, in my opinion. Because we don't, we don't really deal with schools, and we don't really deal with some of the bigger issues at the state level. But we certainly can talk about what happens on a local level. And when it comes to impacting families, impacting individuals, impacting seniors, I think we need to take a closer look at that. And based on what the Commissioner is referencing to, if the mayor is on there, I wish he was fighting a little bit more for the average citizen. You know, today, the McMansions are coming, and they take a $400,000 house, and they build a $1 million home in their place. So the landscape of our entire community is changing. And I would like to see more effort being placed on trying to minimize those costs, if at all possible.
Thank you. Ms. Koch?
Thank you. So definitely want to echo Randy's comments that OUC does a great job on responsiveness and getting power back up. Certainly, as a mom and a business owner in District Four, we see the increase in costs in our utility bills as well. I will say, as someone that's not a politician but a resident of District Four for 18 years, I don't fully understand the relationship between OUC and our city. I have to be very honest. I go to all of our community meetings, I follow the news, I do everything I can to get information. But there's definitely just a lack of communication. So when you ask that question, I can honestly say, I don't know how the city and OUC interact together. I can only tell you as a resident and a business owner that, you know, it's disappointing to not understand the relationship better, but definitely appreciate and trust the leadership and the support that OUC gives our community. Thank you.
Okay. Please tell the voters, what are the two specific initiatives that you would like to see accomplished in your term that is different than maybe what the city is planning to do? What would you be spending your time on and leading on? Starting with Commissioner Sheehan, then go into Ms. Koch and then Randy Ross.
Yeah, I think what we really need desperately in Orlando is an affordable housing ordinance. We were actually preempted from the, from state government from doing any kind of a rent control, which would have helped provide, you know, rent relief to residents in District Four. Very frustrating. But if we can get an affordable housing ordinance, what the state has allowed us to do, and will not preempted us to do, is if we allow a density bonus on apartments, we can require affordable housing as part of that. The problem is that we have no way to inspect and make sure those affordable units are affordable, that they, you know, fall within the AMI, all these things that we need to make sure happens or are based on 30% of income, however we're going to define the affordable housing. That all has to be codified in affordable housing ordinance. I've been trying to get that done for the last year. I think it's important for us to get an affordable housing ordinance. My colleagues have been great about saying, okay, well, we've got so many units, let's get, let's get some affordable. But we don't have any way to enforcement, so we need an affordable housing ordinance with teeth. And I think that we also need to work, you know, more closely with communities about crime. My district is the only one that does crime stats every single month. It's posted on my website. People know what's going on in their neighborhoods, and we do have the lowest crime in the city.
Thank you, Ms. Koch.
So first off, number one for me is crime. So Orlando unfortunately has this kind of dubious distinction of being number two of the most dangerous cities in the entire state of Florida. So I think it's imperative when, you know, the next person takes office, there's meetings happening with the chief of police, and we need to identify within District Four, where are the areas of concern? What are we doing to prevent crime? So you can have crime stats, and that's fine, that's great. But what are we doing to prevent it, right? Are we cranking up neighborhood watch programs? Are we properly funding our police department? Are we filling the vacancies? There's a lot of vacancies within the police department. So that's, for me, that's number one. And then the other would be term limits. You know, it's incredibly important to have fresh, new voices and perspective to bring growth to our city. We all live in this city because we love it. Everybody on this call has lived here for a significant amount of time. But without change and without new, fresh new voices, it's really hard, you don't, you don't want to stay in, we don't want to stay in the status quo, we want to grow. So I think it's important to make sure that people who live in this community, we have amazing, wonderful, smart people that want to contribute and they want to serve, to encourage that and put those term limits into place. Thank you.
So of course, you only want two. And I got in my head multiple ones. You know, uniquely, and these aren't my points, in 2015, when I ran for this race, I was knocking on doors, and I thought I knew what people wanted. I thought the property tax increase was going to be a big deal. I thought doing a dog park for $6.5 million is going to be a big deal, and I was totally off-base. What was a big deal to people, now at the big deal I hear at the door, of course, is community safety. There's no secret, it's number one that I hear at the door, and people are concerned. I used to walk my dog at 3:00 in the morning around Lake Davis on a rate, my Beagles, now I have a golden doodle, but I would walk them because I couldn't sleep or something. I wouldn't, I don't even walk my dog at night anymore in that area. Red brick streets were something I heard in 2015. I didn't think that, I didn't know how to posture that to say, everybody's upset about the way the streets are being maintained. Because there's a lot of Orlando that doesn't have red brick streets. But I am a person that's actually had three blowouts, one of which, by the way, the city paid for. I support Katie and the term limits. But most importantly, as a person that cares for senior, our community is not just young people moving into apartments. There are senior citizens in our community that need guidance and help. I'm on the phone, I can't tell you how often, dealing with insurance issues with my mom, all kinds of issues when it comes to her healthcare, arranging appointments. Some seniors just give up. So I think we need to do a better job communicating with seniors in our community and be able to give them hope. Because usually their family has abandoned them. You know, it's not easy to be a caregiver.
Thank you all for that. I wanted to jump in with a quick question. Another thing that's been in the news a bunch lately is the tourist development tax, and whether there are new ways to spend it or whether it should be spent in different ways than it is right now. And I wanted to see realistically, what are the opinions on whether it should be a status quo or how would you see extensions to how the tourist development tax is spent? And I guess we will start with Ms. Koch.
Thank you, Jay. You know, as it pertains to the tourists, and I'm going to speak specifically about District Four, you know, I'm very concerned around, are we fostering an environment that would bring tourism back downtown, right? When we moved here, everybody wanted to come downtown, even if you went to Universal or if you went to Disney. Downtown Orlando is kind of this hotspot, and that's where people wanted to go, and they wanted to interact. And that's really gone away. So I'm concerned that we're still not focusing on the right things that are going to bring kind of those corporations and that environment back into downtown, to bring people in. And I can tell you, as a mom, we don't, of two small kids, and a lot of families don't, and there's a lot of families in District Four, we don't seek downtown, specifically District Four, as somewhere where we feel safe and a comfortable environment. We find those places outside of that. So again, I think we need to focus on some of the core issues to get the businesses down here, to bring the people back into downtown. Thank you, Jay.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. The bedhead tax has been something that ever since voters voted on it with the specific issues that it could be used for, it's been this desire to tighten it, to adjust what it should be used for. Here's the reality of the situation. It can't go for some of the things that people wanted to. Today, Mayor, the mayor of Orange County, Jerry Demings, put out a memo to the city council, and it's out there in public format now, where he believes that we shouldn't, that we should all support the continued improvements to Camping World Stadium. Everybody knows that Camping World Stadium had a Band-Aid put on it not long ago. And at our expense, we did that. Because at the time, we were still going through the process of, are we going to have soccer in the Camping World Stadium? Or are we going to build a stadium? Eventually, as we know, we built a stadium. So I do not, I believe there's money that we should be seeking to maybe look at the privatization of the creation of the Camping, a new Camping World Stadium, not putting more money after old. We did that with the Amway Arena. We tore it down, we built a new one. There's a reason we did that, because sometimes an antiquated property is better to leave and go on and build something new. So when we talk about, is the bedhead tax being used right? Should it be used for education? Should it be used for things that are outside of what the voters voted on, which is so critical here? We can't change the will of the people. And that is, that conversation, the conversation we're having right now is designed to change the will of the people. So my two cents on it is, if people want that tax to do something else, then they need to take it back to the people and let them vote on it and make a decision on how they want that money to be spent.
Thank you, Commissioner Sheehan.
Yeah, the tourist development tax is a self-tax on the hotel industry. And what frustrates me is that whenever there's a pile of money, someone else wants it. And, you know, same thing with the Community Redevelopment Agency. Those are specific purposes that those are approved for. And while I understand that everybody's got a lot of opinions, there is a reason that the tourist tax pays for things like Camping World or the Performing Arts Center or things like that. That's supposed to pay for enhancements. If we want things like better roads and things like that, we should have, we should have passed our own transportation sales tax, which we did not do. I think it's wrong to look to the hotel industry to solve our problems. And we're not even, when we did self-tax, when other counties around us, like Seminole County, they have a one-cent sales tax. And by the way, the brick streets would have been repaired with that money. I've got to beg for brick street repair money every year. That money would have come through the one-cent sales tax, and we did not pass it. So if we're going to complain about our roads and the condition of things, we have to be willing to put aside the funding to be able to pay for that. It's all about the money. So I think that the TDT and the CRA are being spent in the appropriate way. If we want to fix some of these other issues, we're going to have to look towards other revenues in order to do so.
Well, that was a perfect segue, thank you. Because in many ways, it is all about the money. Last month, the city approved a one-point, almost $1.8 billion budget for the next year, which includes 68 more public safety employees and raises for employees. Do you think the city's spending is on track? And if not, please suggest a few other changes we'd like to see. Let's start with Commissioner Sheehan.
Thank you. You know, I think that we have done a really good job with our city budget. I mean, one of the frustrations I had when I first got elected was that we didn't have monthly reports. We didn't have reports to city council. It wasn't included on our agenda. Commissioner Diamond, way back when, and I worked on a platform that would basically go over every city department so we could see where we're at on the budget. That was a really important thing to do, because now we know where all the department heads are. There's not a, now the department heads are more, a lot more responsible. They actually turn money back instead of spending every dollar. And the one thing that I would like to see, of course, is more money put towards road repairs. But we have a new public works director, and he's doing a really good job, I think. It's not, it doesn't help to fix the bricks or pave the streets or do anything until we get the underlying problem solved. We redid Anderson, there were baffle boxes that were made of cypress and clay pipe. We're going to have to do some major reconstruction. We're already doing a lot of it in the city of Orlando. And that's what we need. We need to make sure we're using the money to make the necessary repairs and not letting things rot. If we don't do the necessary maintenance, then we're going to have the problems later. And for a long time, we didn't do the necessary maintenance. Now we're playing catch-up, but we're doing the right thing at the city of Orlando. And I think that we are, I think it's a balanced budget, it's a good budget, and it serves the citizens of Orlando.
Thank you. Ms. Koch?
Thank you, Chris. So as it pertains to the budget that was just rolled out, I want to be very clear, 18 years in corporate life, I work with budgets all the time. And one of the biggest things when it comes to a budget is communicating very clearly what that budget is and why, and having input. I think it's really important to note that where, you know, dollars are being spent for infrastructure repair and things like that, I think that's great, we need that. I don't think it should be lost that there are dollars being spent on increasing pay raises for commissioners. You know, our commissioners are now up to $76,000 and change with full benefits, where the median income for full-time people is still at, you know, just under $40,000. So I think, I think there's some up and down to the budget. I don't know that pay increases should have been approved. I also think it's important to note that there's discretionary funding that gets spent. And I don't know about you guys, but I, I'm not allowed to spend $100,000 and not communicate to the people that hired me how I'm spending it. So I think the lack of communication on how these dollars are being spent is still unclear. And it's important to the residents of District Four to understand how those dollars are being spent and why they're being spent, dollars are being spent, and why they're being spent, and maybe ask for some input as well. So, so yeah, thank you for that question.
All right. Mr. Ross.
Back to the mayor's speech yesterday, and he talked about community safety. When the city council agrees on community safety, when I did public records request on the number of available OPD officers that we have, it was over 60, even though we have, what, 700, 800 total. When I looked at the Orange County Fire Department vacancies that we have, so when I look at the budget, I look at it very differently. I say, why are we have, do we have any? Who doesn't want to live in Orlando, Florida? I mean, I'm from Indianapolis, Indiana, I know they're getting ready to go through fall, and they think it's beautiful, but it's so cold up there, and then it's going to be dreary for four or five months. You know, that's not the greatest place to live. That's why 1,500 people are moving here on a regular basis to central Florida. And if we know that's the trend, it does not take decades, decades of leadership, to know what we need right now in the city of Orlando when it comes to public safety. And that money is available, and it should be looked at, we should not be defunding, we should be funding, we should not be transferring responsibility to bar and restaurant owners, we should be protecting the streets. So the people that live in Winter Park, the people that live in Kissimmee, the people that live anywhere else that used to love to come down to Church Street Station and everything else, they're being pushed away to the Disney Parks Entertainment Situation, to Winter Park, Park Avenue, and to Universal. That's not the way it should be. Orlando could be an amazing Mecca for nighttime entertainment as well. Look at Nashville, look at Greenville, look at some comparable cities. We should not be pushing it away to our competitors, we should be focused on downtown Orlando, and public safety allotment dollars should be there, period.
I'll jump in for another question, if that's all right. I know that the city, at this point, is, the council and the, and the leadership has a, has a very much of a, of a strong mayor setup. And I'm wondering, just, just based on what's happened recently, can you name one or two instances where you feel like the council should have pushed back on Mayor Dyer? And I will start that with Commissioner Sheehan.
Um, there have been a couple of times when I have pushed back on Mayor Dyer, you know, and it's been, it's been pretty public. But, you know, as a strong mayor system, it can be argued either way, it's the system that we have. I think that you can be a strong commissioner if you work with the different department heads. Now granted, I did have a real problem with the Public Works Director because he wasn't getting work done in my district, and it was frustrating, and that is, that's a hard thing when you're a commissioner and you don't have higher firepower. So that's one of the things that's a challenge for a commissioner in a strong mayor system. But I was able to work with the neighborhoods, we were able to kind of shame him and say, look, you're, you took our brick street funding and did only Lake Adair on a couple of streets in Thornton Park, that's not what that's brick street repair money was for. And he ended up retiring, and we got a new Public Works Director. So sometimes you got to be a little creative in the way that you, that you work things. But I think that Mayor Dyer has done, I think Mayor Dyer has done some things that we never thought would be possible, I never thought we'd get a Performing Arts Center, Mayor Hood tried to do that, I never thought we'd get light rail. Mayor Hood tried to do that, but couldn't. So I think that a strong mayor, and Mayor Dyer has done a good job, I enjoyed being on the team, you know, and you can't just criticize, you've got to be able to work with the city staff, and I've enjoyed my tenure on the city council, and I've got some major projects coming up, Lake Eola Park, which is a, you know, major redevelopment of Lake Eola, some other major roadway projects that are coming up that I want to see through, and I want to get those brick streets refinished. So Summerlin and Delaney, your time is coming. So, you know, I think it's, I think it's, I think it's, it's our system that we have. I think, you know, if we want to look at it differently, we certainly can, but I've been able to work well within that system.
Thank you. Mr. Ross.
I, I actually want to go back to, all of the city council, city council voted unanimously with the mayor when it came to the ordinance in downtown. The solution to the crime in downtown Orlando is, there's people, I mean, I talk to OPD officers all the time, that are giving me the inside information. People arrive there around 1 o'clock in the morning, they haven't even been to a bar. So why a bar owner should be penalized for someone who's showing up for some type of activity? I sound like an old person when I say that, I'm going to be 58 next Tuesday, I have a birthday party I'm doing, I say I'm 36, but I'm going to be 58. And I've lived here long enough on this earth to know that I think it was a bad idea, especially when all of the city council, council and the mayor voted to keep it going another six months. It, it's going to go on because the bottom line is whether we have 10 bars or 100 bars. If crime wants to be in your community, I had a friend that was leaving a parking garage the other night, having picked up a friend who had drank too much, the guy behind him got so frustrated with the time it was taking to get out of the parking garage, he was assaulted right there. I, I think that Mayor Dyer is, has done some amazing things. I would also applaud Commissioner Sheehan. The reason an openly gay guy like me can run is because someone like her decided to run in 2000. So I don't, I don't talk negatively about that process. What I will tell you, though, is sometimes I feel the council is afraid of the mayor. You cannot bully people if they're, if you, if, I got a store owner over, over in a Milt district, that told me, he put up a post, and, you know, somebody was defecating in his backyard, and all of a sudden he was getting bullied about his post. That's not the way it works. Our job is to find solutions for the people in District Four. It is not to penalize them. So when it comes to the mayor, nice guy, thanks for everything you've done, but it's time sometimes for folks to realize, move on, do something else. You've done great work, now it's time to do something else.
Thank you. And we'll close it out with Ms. Katsch.
Thank you, Jay. So, little different perspective here, outside of the work that I do corporately, my husband and I have owned a small business in downtown Orlando for the last 11 years. So I would push back on the permitting process and the startup process for small businesses in this community. It's incredibly painstakingly hard to open a business. It's, it's hard to open a business as it is, it's even harder when you have to go through so many different permitting process, processes within the city. I don't know if anybody on this call, I don't think they have, has, has opened their own business. It's incredibly expensive, it's time-consuming, and the hoops that you have to jump through within, within Orlando are difficult. I can tell you, we have friends that had to take out personal loans to start their business because the permitting process was taking too long. And I think that, that takes away the urge for people to want to develop more, but within our district, I think it stops people, you know, new business owners from coming in. I can tell you, so that's incredibly frustrating, I think we need to push back on that process and have some sort of liaison or some sort of task force that helps someone that says, if I want to open a restaurant, this is the process, this is what you need to do, this is what the city needs, these are the requirements, right? And, and to second that, because we've been open for 11 years, there's a lack of ongoing support. So we've been in this community, and we support this community, and we love this community, but there's times where there's such a lack of support that it's hard to want to stay open, it's hard to want to continue to, continue being open in this community. So thank you, Jay, I know I'm out of time.
Well, thank you, thank you very much for that. We are getting close to the end of our time, but I'd like to throw out a bit of a philosophical question. Governor DeSantis has done his best to turn the word woke into a four-letter word. He rarely name-checks Orlando, but, but it's kind of clear that, that this city has been in his sights before. Do you think the city's policies fall within that definition? And is that a good or a bad thing? And let's start with Mr. Ross.
I have been on the record and open that I'm not incredibly pleased with our governor. Some of the decisions, whether it was with the Parental Rights Act, taking it past sixth grade, whether it's regarding the LGBT community in general, I have been outspoken against some of those issues, which those are the ones you're talking about, and, not to get into party affiliation, but I am the conservative in this conversation. So when I watch what's happening, I just see it as dividing lines. You know, I'm in my third term, appointed by a Democrat on the Orange County Mission and Review Board, Commissioner Myra Uribi. My job on that board is to bring about the best volunteers in Orange County, no matter their party affiliation, sexual orientation, race, or gender. And I do that really well. I work with all sides of the aisle. When I had people in 2020 during COVID reaching out to me, I was talking to a lot of different party affiliation folks to get resolve for those people. So I get the term woke, I think it's being overused, but at the same time, there are times when it does seem a little on the far-leaning left and the far-leaning conservative right. That's not me, I live in the middle. I'm an openly gay guy, how could I live on one side or the other? I sit, I sit in the middle. So when I look at those conversations, and as I admit to you publicly how I feel about the governor and some of his comments, listen, the I-4 corridor is still going to be a component when it comes to political elections, not just locally, not just statewide, but nationally. And there's going to be issues that come up as a result of that. And I just wish that, you know, I don't have access to the governor to be able to tell him, I think he needs to simmer down a little bit, but, you know, I think a lot of people are already doing that for me.
Thank you. Commissioner Sheehan?
Yeah, woke was a term that actually was used in the black community, state woke, to make sure that they were, you know, vigilant against racism. And I think that it's actually, you know, been used to, to, to attack anyone who tries to do anything that's progressive. I'm horrified by what happened at Plaza Live when the governor sent in inspectors to rate a drag show, for goodness sake, that was the, I was there at the show. It was a lot of fun, and it was the stupidest overreach of state government I've ever seen. I'm a proud progressive. I don't think taking affirming books away from LGBTQ youth is a smart thing. We have, you know, LGBTQ youth have the largest suicide rate, that's why I support the Zebra Coalition. And I think that picking on people because they happen to be gay, or, or trans is disgusting, it is not in line with American values. And I am tired of this divisive rhetoric that does nothing but hurt people, and especially our kids. I went to Lake Como School to see Hamilton with the children, and that was, a lot of them, it was the first time they'd ever been to Dr. Phillips. And they came out, and they'd say, oh, you're safe because you have a rainbow pin on. And, and now I see them, and they're horrified, what's going to happen to me? Why are they taking our books away? They went from being proud to being frightened, and that's wrong. Our kids should feel safe in our schools. So I think that, I'm proud, woke, wisdom, optimism, kindness, and empathy, that's who I am, that's what I will continue to fight for. And I think that this divisive rhetoric is nonsense, and I'm glad to see it's being turned down to the national level finally, but we need to stop it because there's still so many things in our state legislature that are happening to, to hurt people.
Ms. Katsch.
Thank you. So, so definitely, I, I have lived and existed in this community for 18 years, and, and I wouldn't describe us as woke, I would definitely describe us as a community that embraces everybody. And having, I have kids in the schools where Governor DeSantis is, you know, his, his rulings on, we don't say gay, we're banning books, I see that firsthand. I see, I'm in the schools with these kids, and, and it's devastating them, and it's, there's teachers, principals, you name it, are being affected by this. And I think it's important, especially when you're a figure in the LGBTQ+ community, to show up for these kids. These kids need support, these teachers need support. And it doesn't stop there. You know, I, I, my husband is Jewish, there's been an insane amount of anti-Semitic rhetoric that's been going on in our community as well, we have Nazi flags being hung over I-4. Why aren't we talking about that? Why isn't the leadership in our community talking about the attack on, on the African-American community and the Jewish community? So it doesn't stop there with him, with, with the rhetoric that's going on, and he's enabling these, these hate organizations to attack everybody. Hispanics, African-Americans, Jewish people, so it, you know, it doesn't stop there. So it needs to be brought to attention, people need to be talking about it more, and it needs to be condemned by our leadership in the city, for sure. Thank you.
The Orlando Sentinel will be making a recommendation in this race. However, we always encourage voters to consider it just a starting place. Review each candidate's website, read Ryan's excellent coverage, and do your own research. Find a candidate who you believe is best qualified to represent your values and hopes for Orlando. Make sure you're ready to vote. You must be a registered voter in District Four to, to vote in this particular race. There is a statewide, I'm sorry, a citywide race for mayor as well. The cutoff to register is coming up in just a few days. Early voting will be taking place October 9th through November 5th at three locations. The closest for most District Four residents is the Elections Office on Kaley. Anyone who wants to register to vote by mail must file a new request, they've all expired by October 26th, but you can get those requests in now. And finally, Election Day is November 7th. And with, with that, I would like to go ahead and ask, ask our kids to make their closing statements, starting with Ms. Katsch.
So yeah, so in closing, I would say, you know, after two decades of the same leadership in District Four, you know, we're facing some really serious challenges. Our crime is up, services to the city are down, such as garbage collection, things like that. There's definitely an opportunity to communicate better with what's going on between the city and the constituents that are voting, our leadership in the District Four. You know, I, as I stated earlier, I don't feel like we're a business friendly, a friendly city. I think there's an opportunity to improve that process and bring new businesses and support the existing businesses. But it's just time, it's time for fresh, new leadership. You know, I have a background in criminal justice, so there, you know, I understand the need to have the conversation about crime, and we need to be honest about what crime looks like in downtown Orlando, because we can't continue to, to act like it doesn't exist, and it's not growing. And not only is it growing in downtown, it's creeping into our neighborhoods, which leads into, you know, you know, the need for term limits, to have fresh, new voices, we need to encourage people to run, you know, and to feel like they can run, and that their voices are being heard. So, you know, I'm not a politician, this is not something I ever really thought I would do, to be quite honest with everybody, but after 18 years in, in watching the decline in, in the city that I love, this is important to me, this is not a stepping stone, I have a career, this is just something I'm really passionate about, and I want to make improvements to the city. And I love the city, we have roots here, I have family, we have a business, the kids are in school here, so it's, it's incredibly important to me that we do the right things to, to make Orlando the city that it can be. Thank you.
Commissioner Sheehan.
Yeah, I am proudest of my compassionate leadership after the Pulse massacre that raised $34 million for the victims' families, protections for LGBTQ community, and public accommodation, housing, and employment. I'm a proponent of the successful Main Street districts who help our business owners through permitting issues and problems, pedestrian and bicycle safety, we've, we've got a Beltway going all the way around Orlando, that's, that's, that's happening. I serve on the East Center Florida Regional Planning Council, work on sustainability initiatives, I provide crime statistics to every single neighborhood monthly, knowledge is power, and our violent crime is down 30% in the city. So I know that there's a lot of frustration about it, but we have made, made strides to get violent crime down, we have a new chief, he's excellent, and there are term limits, they're called elections. And if you have a problem with people electing me, maybe it's with the constituency, maybe it's not with me. You know, I mean, I ask for people's vote, I've been very successful at doing so, and I look forward to continuing to serve the residents of District Four.
So listen, I came here in 1993 to launch, to launch my kids' fitness program, and I was an overweight guy that realized that fitness and wellness was not touching kids. And so I went, Mayor Glenda Hood at the time had launched, was launching Inner City Games Orlando. And I went to her chief of staff at the time, and I said, hey, I just moved here, and I want to do this health and fitness expo. And before I knew it, it was the largest event we had in Inner City Games Orlando, targeting Title I students in Orange, Osceola, and Seminole County, and we were getting kids on the right path when it came to health and wellness. And I was still fat Randy, I was wearing big t-shirts, trying to cover it all up. And so you go through time, when I came out in 2002, that was a big deal for me, I'd lived my life 36 years as a, as a straight person, and I was coming into a whole new environment. But that first relationship I had was a domestic abuse situation. So what did I do in 2014? When I thought there was a problem, I launched Walk a Mile in Her Shoes for Harbor House. Not only did we do 2014, we did 2015, and we raised over $50,000 for that organization, as well as a security system. When a friend of mine died of AIDS, I put together an AIDS Walk team, and we raised over $20,000. You know, and in recent years, you know, my passion has been more driven towards senior issues, because obviously I deal with that on a regular basis. Community service and community organizing are about where your passion comes from. Your life story is not an easy one, you're going to have ups and downs. But my logo on my truck that I drive around in, and my logo in this is, don't San Francisco R Orlando. We do not need tent cities here, we have a crime problem that is rising because of our homeless situation, and we can't just ignore it, we have to do something about it. We cannot keep everything normal. Decades and decades are enough.
Okay, now, I will sincerely say, thank you so much for joining us, and we, we look forward to and wish you all the best of luck in, in becoming election.